It is now seven thirty and I'll call out to order the city council regular meeting for today, Monday, June twenty seventh. And I would ask our interim clerk to do a roll call, please.
Roll call, Madam Garrett, Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Canes.
Here.
Councilwoman Miller here, Madam Mary, have a call.
Thank you very much. I invite everyone in the audience to state the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to make a addition to the agenda, which would be under presentations, which will be B, John Rudd. Rude, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
I'd also like to make a motion to add items G, H, and I respectively. Contract for approval of the contract for the city administrator, item H, approval of Michigan homeowner assistance fund. And item I, Southfield Public Schools.
What's your explanation?
Did you? Did you get that for G, city administrator? H is going to be the Michigan homeowners assistant fund?
Wait, 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 can you, can you make G, Michigan homeowners? Because we already, we talked about that earlier.
Right, we have just moved it.
No. I wrote it.
Yeah. And then I was going to be. Is there any other additions to or? Any additions, removals of the agenda? If not, I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded for the approval of the agenda. I will ask for a roll call, please.
That motion is inclusive of those additions?
Oh, yeah. Motion to approve with the additions of G, H, and I. You'll have to read it out to. Oh, yeah. And five B for John Rude.
It's been moved and seconded. Now can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call, Mayor Proton Cantor. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now we have the presentations from the road commission for Oakley County. And it's just basically giving us an opportunity to talk to a representative from the road commission. And. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Alex Trusinski. I'm the traffic engineer with Traffic and Safety Department with the Road Commission for Oakley County. With me is also Danielle Duno. She's the director of our Traffic and Safety Department. We've received some questions via email from, from Mayor Garrett regarding kind of what the road commission does in Letherton Village. We maintain jurisdiction over two roads in Letherton Village, which is Southfield Road and also Thirteen Mile Road. So not a whole lot, but two, two major portions of, of the village.
Thirteen isn't in Letherton.
Twelve mile, thank Danielle. At the northern portion of, of, of the city there. So. Kind of things that we've got going on recently with, with the city. We've just completed an environmental assessment for Southfield Road, all the way from nine and a half mile, all the way up to Thirteen Mile Road. That has been submitted to FHWA and MDOT for their review and comment. So that process is pretty well along and, and almost finalized there. The other thing that we've got going on as road commission is a resurfacing project on Southfield Road. Which is called the Three R Project of Resurfacing Rehabilitation Project, just to mill the existing surface and replace that. Along with some minor upgrades on Southfield Road from eleven to twelve mile road. That is currently in the very early part of the design process in our design division. They're working their way through it and I know they've met with different individuals, major engineering consultants to discuss that project. One of the other questions that, that was posed to us was six ninety-six and eleven mile and Letherton Boulevard, that particular portion. RSCO C maintains a signal at Southfield Road and eleven mile road. So we worked a little bit with changing some of those things, dealing with, with your chief of police. In order to facilitate a little bit better pedestrian cropping there. Letherton Boulevard and eleven mile road, eleven mile road isn't under our jurisdiction. It, I believe it actually belongs to the city and it's under your guys' jurisdiction as a city. But if you guys want to discuss some, some enhancements in that area. We'd be glad to kind of sit down and help with that discussion, but it would really involve MDOT, the city. Because MDOT handles those ramps coming off of six ninety-six. And anytime you introduce a high-speed environment like that to a lower-speed environment, there's gonna have to be some long-range discussions and planning. And we can help point you in the right direction through the top to an MDOT. But that's really not our thing, but we can help engage in that conversation if that's something that you guys want us to do. You know, to help with that discussion.
Please bring the right MDOT person because they are so unresponsive.
We can, I, I can point you to the right person who's responsible for their traffic and safety in, in the metro region.
Thank you.
We, we know who that is and we can definitely put you in contact with the right person.
Yeah, I think the, the, what, I would be impotent as to bringing somebody with traffic and safety was, you know. I mean, sure, the pedestrian cropping at Letherton Boulevard and eleven mile is obviously important, but it's, it's the automobile traffic as well. So we have a lot of accidents there. We just had a resident T-bone there a couple of weeks ago. And it, and it's really difficult to get across, especially if you're going straight to make the eastbound, go eastbound on eleven mile. So we had a resident who suggested, you've shown us some, some examples, some pictures of where they. Put kind of a cross hashing pattern over the intersection, you know, along with signs to try to make it more, more visible. More visible to cars coming off of the highway as well as cars coming down eleven mile road that there's an intersection there and not to block the intersection. So that people aren't doing that, you know, going out one lane at a time and then oops, they get.
Nodding across.
Right, nodding across. But that, I mean, that's one thing that we're, I, because I was kind of hoping you might have a suggestion, sound like a suggestion is to get the appropriate person and the safety person at the road commission involved on that.
Yeah, we, we can definitely, you know, involve with, you know, pushing the right direction with MDOT and who to talk to. It, it, it gets really difficult because you do have the, the exit ramp coming off of the freeway. And if it's not during rush hour that it isn't backed up, you have a high-speed environment coming into a lower-speed environment and you have that length. And having Letherton Boulevard right there at the end of that ramp makes it extraordinarily difficult. Yeah. There's, there's a few options that might be available, but that would take some, some big discussion with MDOT and a little bit of long-range planning. MDOT does have a project coming up in the future on six ninety-six, which would be a good opportunity to maybe have those discussions at that time. If you, you know, if changes were desired. But again, that's really a discussion between you and MDOT and will we be liable to point you in that right direction?
Yeah, could you provide the information to Suzie or do you already have it?
And we have, we have been in contact with an individual about the MDOT, I mean, like very loose contact. And we've said this is a concern, so it shouldn't be a giant surprise after, you know, when Alex is able to give us that information.
Any other questions that I can answer for you guys now?
Sure, I have some questions about the painting of Southfield Road. Is there funding available for that? Is that something?
There, there is funding that's been identified to do that project at this point.
Okay.
So we are, we are in the design stages of it. I am not intimately familiar with it, but I know they've done topographic survey. They've done a walkthrough of the area to identify some of the major concerns with drainage and, and some patient conditions and things of that nature. I know there have been some discussions about adding some additional signalization in the area for pedestrian facilities as well.
And I, I believe that project also is going to eliminate the ditches on both sides with, I believe that's what we talked about last time.
I, I believe, I believe that's the case. I could, I could look into that and I can get you a little bit better answer from, from our design team.
And this is, did the city pay a portion or how we treat? Large reason why the DDA has been saving its own balance.
But I believe there's also a financial commitment from the city as well. It's somewhere between five hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, there's, there's some financial commitment, but I think the bulk of it, at least in the discussions that we've had so far this time. Wait, did you say five hundred to eight hundred thousand?
I remember correctly.
That's a lot.
Right, and that's one of the reasons why we've been saving our, our major road money and building up that balance for both eleven mile and Southfield.
So the road and balance and the DDA?
I don't know what the DDA would be.
We have to do the mix. We don't have that budget and we haven't looked at it for, it's been a while since we met with road commission to discuss final, you know, any kind of budgeting. I seem to recall there's also use of some tri-party loans for maybe some of those intersections in the ADA. But I, I, again, those will be some more in-depth conversations. So, you know, we meet again. Is there a timeline on this? That this would be included in our twenty-two, twenty-three budget or is it something that would be an amendment or?
Twenty-four construction year. So I would, I would, this would probably be, I don't know how you're gonna handle your budgeting, but they would be constructed in the two thousand twenty-four construction.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Well, thank you for your patience. And if you could give the information for MDOT to Suzie, that would be great. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Drive safely. Mr. Rude.
Good evening. Thank you very much for putting me on the agenda. I know I came in here on the, on the cup up, so to speak. Want to discuss Forest Drive, as I'm sure you well know. Nothing has happened. Okay, I've had several calls, so a number of inspirers. I got ahold of a few folks. Some concerns. Price, okay, I brought that up. I see boys making offers. The worst the council can do is say no. I made it stressed to them that everything is at approval of council, so it can be anywhere from two days to two weeks before we get a chance to speak to council. As everyone well knows, interest rates have gone up dramatically here in the past couple of weeks and they anticipated interest rates will continue to go up. As a couple of builders have indicated to me, they said they're a little kind of hanging back to see what happens. They're not gonna be doing anything. Another concern is the fact that Forest Drive, they asked if the city is gonna maintain the road. Then when I held back on, I don't know if the city would be maintaining the road. I said I anticipate that to be a private road and it's up to the, whoever buys the place. If they have to, you know, have an association take care of the private road. Which reads that there's four or five spaces in, in Middle Grove Drive there on the, on the circle. That could be used for, could be used for housing and that would be maintained by the city. That's already maintained by the city, of course. And on the other side of the coin, Forest Drive would be private and they would have to be, or by, by any type of association that they get with. That's what I anticipate. Whether there's a change on that, of course. I'm here to speak to you about getting a price reduction. Okay, I think we do have to reduce the price. Plus the fact it is very overgrown with growth, rush. To put bluntly, I know the city is very busy. I know the city employees are working overtime, not, maybe not necessarily overtime, working quite a bit on this. But at the same time, you've got to be something about getting that project cut down. And made a little suggestion about making the brush. Just getting it like maybe cutting the back maybe about fifty or a hundred feet from the road. And, you know, just at least opening up a little bit so that people can see back there is what's going on. Basically, as I said, getting rid of the brush and reducing the price. And that's why I'm here for today.
What do you recommend in terms of reducing the price? I know we currently have it at one seventy-five.
We have it at one ninety-five.
One ninety-five.
Okay, that doesn't seem to work.
Did not reduce it and we didn't do any clearing, which is what you asked for in the very beginning, was for that to be cleaned up when the weather permitted.
I've been asking for that since we started out.
Yes.
And that was my strong recommendation when we started out and I don't know if anyone's been, I'm sure that somebody's been by there. It is tremendously overgrown. And we got a lot of tree, weed, trees. I don't know if there's even such a term, but these are weeds. They're now trees.
Invasive.
Invasive, that's about it, yes. And gotta do something to chop those down. I mean, you don't have to, you don't have to have it looking like the front of our city, city hall there, but at the same time, it should be trimmed down. So recommendation as far as price, I'm recommending you reduce it to at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so what we need to do is we need to put you on the next agenda so we can actually. Do, what am I trying to say? To actually prove it, the action item, thank you. But now that we know about that and what we need to do also. So that would not be until. July twenty-fifth.
July twenty-fifth.
And. If we could get someone from DPW just to go over there to see what they can.
I have talked to David about it a couple of times about having the lawnmower gentleman go over there and see if he could cut along the property for the lawnmower and that. But they have, there's some water new breaks and they're trying to also restore people's yards from work that was done last fall. So they have been very busy. But I will see if I can get him over there.
I just make, have a plan of, of actions when they can go there and what, you know, they are able to do. Someone know by a, like a due date of when we can expect to see some type of changes or something.
I want just a contract expire with you.
Contract expires July.
Okay, so we don't have much time for that. So I think that we haven't been clear on our end. So I hope that we will reconsider the expiration of that, at least until some of that clearing is done, which again, you did make that very clear from the very beginning.
You have anything else for us?
Pardon me?
Does he have anything else for us?
I'll start waiting till July twenty-fifth to see what you want to do then. Do something now, the sooner the better, but it's, you know, the council, they want.
Send a contract extension.
Pardon me?
I said send a contract extension because it will be expired by the time we come back, right?
Yeah. Extend the contract?
Well, I, the contract will, it expires July, we're not meeting till July twenty-sixth.
And it's up to you all if you want to put it on the agenda tonight to lower the price.
Still have it.
Excuse me, you could, yeah, you can, you can make a motion. It's only a week for him to let, to reduce the pricing.
We're talking about reducing the price.
I know what you're talking about, but it only, it only gives him a week. For do, for anything to happen.
Well, you don't have the contract with you right now, but the one thing that you're asking for is to lower the price. Now that's something that we can do now. Is, yeah, we can do that on, for the act item and then.
You can just put in for the extension.
Right, you can send us the extension. I don't think that, the extension doesn't really necessarily have to go to, through a meeting, does it?
It, it would need to be approved by council.
And I'm sure you do have it on. I don't think you have an extension on you right now, right? Okay.
Extension, you know, that's, on my part, it's not bring to a brief.
I understand.
If you can, and it's a season, great, if that will wait till twenty.
So we could act on the price reduction tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, can we add some of the clearing of the property also?
So we can put this as item J now. So can you stick around until, until then?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to add item J, discussion of House of the Woods property to the agenda.
It's been moved and supported for adding the House of Woods property onto the agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor. Motion carrying.
Either you can stick around or give yourself about a half an hour, go get some coffee. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the public comments for items that's on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. And also just remember that this is a commentary and that it is not a dialogue. Is there anyone that is in the viewing audience or in the audience in person that would like to speak? And if you want to speak on Zoom, please raise your hand. Again, this is to speak on anything that's on the agenda, any items that's on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone that would like to speak on Zoom or in person? Okay, I'm gonna take that as you know. Next, we're gonna do the consent agenda. Items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and not controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If the discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. And discussed separately immediately after consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. I do have a question on the May twenty-two dispersment report, so I would like that one to be revoked out.
Minutes and please report.
All right, well, I have, I want to make the motion to accept everything else in the consent agenda. So make a motion to accept items B, D, E, and G from the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to.
Yes.
The. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items A, B, and F.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. You did it the opposite way. Okay. Um. Um. We'll move to second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Thank you. So now we'll talk about the, a minute. Please give the page number.
Well, page seven. Under section twelve, public comments. Mike Arvo came to talk about cannibals and vassals. I think it was to beat the cannabis. Page fourteen. Under public comment, speaker was Laurie Kuz, L-A-U-R-I-D, K-U-N-Z. And page seven, also the same thing under public comments. Name needs to be correct.
You said page seven, who?
Page seventeen, same thing.
I said seventeen.
But dispersment report on page twenty-four. And then this, this is just a curiosity about, I am noticing that we're giving a refund for AC credit. Is that because the air conditioning is not working or what's going on? I've seen it a couple of times when you. It is.
Correct, because we're meeting until after July first because we need to get a couple of condensers, one for the community room and one for the.
Wow, okay. That's all. I just want to know that one. Thank you. For item F, the police report.
Wait, I have a question with this person. Page twenty-four, under government services. I see that we paid Corey Doll four hundred dollars to do the spring newsletter. Correct. I thought that was something that we were paying additional money. Those, this step to do. Have the newsletter, nothing, not print newsletter. We needed to contact that out.
Is that typical?
And Corey was doing the newsletter when she was here in Queens.
I thought that was something I specifically asked. And we agreed to the four thousand dollars additional per month. Page twenty-six, and this is a lot of times in the budget, oil changes. Do we have any kind of oil change discount program or something? It seems like there's been a lot of money on oil changes. I'm assuming the police car.
The police cars get oil changes, but they do get a discount through this. They get a discount.
Yeah, okay.
But it's not usually just oil changes. Sometimes they get windshield wipers there. Sometimes they have to get their filters, things like that. So that's why you might see different costs or different prices.
Yeah, seventy-two ninety-five, one twenty-seven.
Yep.
Ninety, okay, and it's pretty, pretty regular. So just wondering how often.
Really drive the vehicles a lot. They put a lot of miles on them.
Page twenty-eight. The OHM advisor, we know that's the water report and we paid two thousand six hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents to them. What does that cover? That would force this. It seems to have a whole lot and is there more that they're gonna be doing that's included in this amount? Are we paying them more? What's, what, what would the contract with them? What does that look like?
That was to do their initial data gathering and dive into what could be and identify what could be. The potential sources of the water loss. So the idea, you know, obviously they're acting, feeling optimistic that they would be able to come. Come up with the final, you know, smoking gun, if you will, or leaky faucet as well. And so this was, like I said, they, they went through.
A ton of data.
Again, on a data, I mean, minute-by-minute data, day-by-day. I mean, they went through a lot of data to analyze. If there was anything in the system that they could see that would be, would be the cause of it. We will have a presentation or a final report that will be distributed to council here coming up in the next week or so. And I am anticipating a proposal, though I have not yet gotten it, for. Additional work to include field work. They want to test out a few of the meters and connections that we have to really drill down even further. They do believe they've got, they're on the right track. But when I haven't received that proposal, I'm just, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to request that OHM come and speak with the entire city council so that we all have this information. We can ask questions that we might have, and they met with you and Bruce, but I would like to. You know, we're spending a significant amount of money and it's, it's a huge, huge problem. So I would really like for all city council to. Be able to hear directly from them.
Police report?
Yeah, so I was just wondering, I see that we do. Uh, yeah, so I was just wondering, I see that we do a lot of traffic studies. But then what happens with the traffic study? I know we count speeders and. How many cars and all that kind of stuff, but then it's done without. And I know she might be as. I guess we have to hold up.
But they use it for the placement of their radar signs. They use it to help determine where where to put patrols because they can see where where the success of speeding.
Like if there's.
The time that there will have someone positioned in that area.
Right.
And how are these set up? Are these these uh spots set up based on feedback from residents or who determines where these?
I I can't, I can't answer that question. I know he's got um consultants that. T I A, but I don't know um what. But I know he's got consultants and sometimes he works with, but I don't know if that's.
We can wait until you come back, so you can have an accurate answer.
Thank you. Okay, um, so now we need a motion to um approve. A, B.
You gotta do each one individually.
Okay, I was trying. Um. Approval of of minutes. For the study session, not each study session, are you serious? Okay, oh.
That's why we have a monthly consent agenda.
Okay, well, first up, approval of the study session, May sixteenth, twenty twenty two.
My motion to approve the study session, May sixteen, twenty twenty two.
Their second. Good move. It's been moved in second. You know, I mean, it's just a full moves in. We, it's been moved in second. Um, is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Very none, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Motion here.
Make a motion to approve the regular uh meeting, May sixteen, twenty twenty two uh minutes.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Very none, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion here.
Make a motion to approve May twenty third, twenty twenty two study session minutes.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Protim Cantor. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yeah.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion here.
Make a motion to approve the June first, twenty twenty two uh special meeting minutes.
Is there a second word? It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
No.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yeah.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion here.
Motion to approve the May twenty twenty two police report.
Nope.
June seventh.
June thirteenth on the next one.
There's a special meeting in June.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, sorry.
Did you do June seventh?
No, he just did June first.
Oh, okay.
And then he had to do.
To approve the June seventh point, like his special meeting.
Word. They moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor. Councilmember Jennings.
No.
Motion here.
Motion to approve June thirteenth, twenty twenty two study session minutes.
Is there a second? Or it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
No.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Motion here.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve the dispersment for the next twenty twenty two.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, which one are we doing?
We're doing the May twenty twenty second dispersment report. It's been moved and we need a second. Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor. Councilmember Jennings.
No.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you.
And the motion to approve the May twenty twenty two police report.
It's been moved in second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
No.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you. Next, we have the public hearing. For the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three budget, the budget hearing. That's you.
If they have any question or anything.
Yeah. I thought you were going to introduce it, you know. Thank you.
So it's that time of year that we are doing our twenty two, twenty three budget. Um, and put together a budget for the next fiscal year, um, which. We will be open today because we had switched last year. We like to devote the people to have it a month later. So instead of it being made. With the next. Um, we are looking at um the impact on our fund balance of one hundred and seventy one thousand eight hundred fifty three dollars on the general fund. All the other funds are pretty much going to be people there. Um, correct, and there is no unbalanced being taken.
Hey, thank you. Is there anyone that?
I can also say that our military has gone down for the city in twenty one, twenty two, plus twenty four, twenty four, nine zero six, and twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, point one, two, six.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to be heard regarding the budget? If you're online and would like to speak, please raise your hand. If you are in council chambers. Let's come to the chair. Is there anyone that would like to be heard about the budget, the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget? Would anyone like to speak regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three budget? Hearing none and close the hearing. Now we have um for consideration and approval, um actual request about fiscal year twenty twenty three. Budget.
Yes, ma'am, and counsel, this is the time of the year that we adopt the twenty two, twenty three budget, which will be our next fiscal year. Um, we for our revenue expenses.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt this year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three budget.
You need a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. You know, we started to speak.
Oh, I did have a couple of questions. On the water fund. What are salaries and wages and fringe benefits? Who gets those?
Most of that is for the um retirees for their defined benefits. Most of those come out of there for the DPS um. Retired employees that are out of the um defined benefit.
You come out of the water fund?
And water.
And do they also, I see the same items in the in the sewer fund. Is that the same thing?
Correct.
Um, I do have a question on capital expenditures. The two police cars, um, when do you anticipate delivery on those?
They um are out. They probably will not get on until um probably the end of July, maybe August even.
Oh, this pretty readily, were they ordered?
We hope.
Were they ordered this year or last year?
They've been ordered through the um bid net, um through the state. We go through um ordering them that way. But we don't have to. If the budget wasn't approved or the capital improvements were not approved, we do not have to take um take control over the cars.
And I believe Scott said at the last meeting that they were like nine months ago or something like that because there's a long lead time.
There is a long. Had they already been approved at their point?
No, they just, they order them, but they're not approved until the budget is approved, but they don't have to take, they don't have to take order on them. If they come in, if the budget is not approved, they would not take over. They would not take control of the car.
Okay.
They just have to order them out there so that they have. Because we do have such a long wait times with. Anybody who already knows only time.
Um, I do have another question. I I did see that we do generate revenue in our community room. The tune of about sixty five thousand dollars a year.
That's this year.
And I did put in a request for painting and it was only forty nine hundred. And I think if we're. We find one avenue that we do generate income, it's kind of important to. Reinvest in that. So that we can continue to re- generate revenue. So I'd like to see us put the painting back in that project.
Well, that's something we can do through a budget amendment.
You can.
Something council would have to decide, but but when it was decided, when I was working on the budget, it was decided to take painting out.
Okay, and then I have another thing that I'd like to add to it because we don't really have anything in here for the residents. Scott um. McKee did get us a very nice bid on clearing the triangles and I thought it was just for three and it turns out it's for four. And I think that would be a big benefit to the city to get those areas cleared and to. Get them. Pretty and ready and beautified for the people who live around them. And that was only twenty thousand five twenty.
That would be another because you your email that you sent to me, um, councilwoman Canes, was after the budget. After the budget hearing, so I cannot put those in the budget.
But we can do it in an.
It has to be through council as a whole.
Okay.
So council has to decide if what they wanted to. With the budget um or if they just want to approve it through budget amendments later.
And when can we do those? And when are budget amendments? When do we bring them up?
January.
Oh, not till next year?
Well, it it can be done at any time. You can make the. You can bring it to the next council meeting. It could be agreed on at the next council meeting, but then the budget.
Okay. Um, and then sewer expenditures. I see like they're doubling. They doubled from twenty to twenty one. And twenty one to twenty two, right? Is that sewer and water? They both seem to be. Is that all related to the water issues?
Capital bond.
The capital bonds there um were, we had to have five hundred and fifty thousand in for the retention tank.
Oh, yeah, I saw that. Okay.
Then we have the all the um lead and copper piping. We have the um. Stop boxes are in there, the fire hydrants, the gate valves, those are all part of capital improvements. Although they're in the water and sewer.
And we did remove, I didn't see them in there. We removed those um water meters. Residential water meters. Did I see those out of here?
Uh, no, we are, I think they're back in there.
It's still in there, but it's an expense that we're probably not going to make. There's some, some of the, some of the, uh, I don't know what page it's on. If some of that, some of the, most of the eight hundred and sixty thousand is water meters, um, probably about. Hundred thousand, hundred and fifty thousand of that I have to look for.
Oh, here it is.
It's water.
In in uh infrastructure around the water meter, so centralized reading and so forth.
It is in the budget for eight hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, so.
Because it was a part of the. And so we should put that in there. I did remove it from this year's budget when I did my budget.
So we're not balanced. We're taking one hundred and seventy one out of. Our, we have a fund.
Fund balance.
And do we typically take that much out? To balance a budget?
Year, I think we were um scheduled to take two hundred and somehow. But that doesn't mean that we won't put some, we won't put money back in this year at the end of the year.
And did you end up taking that amount out this year? Did you end up dipping into it?
That is, yeah, I don't know what it's going to be at the top at the end of the budget or at the end of the fiscal year. When everything's um done and we're going through the audit process, but I try to typically put money back into fund balance every year. I think I'd only had to take out maybe one or two years since I've been here in twenty one years from fund balance.
Right, it's been the COVID years.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah, I'm page one thirty five of the packet. Um, I think there's a tight line there. I just want to make sure it gets corrected because. I don't want residents to think that our water bill, our water rate is going up by fifty percent. I think that's the bullet point should be that the. Bills will increase from uh thirty two dollars and thirteen cents to thirty three dollars and seven cents. If I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want pitchforks and new tortures tomorrow. Um, and then two questions with the effect of. Major streets and.
Page.
Uh, local streets. The first one is on page nine twenty nine. Yeah, we talked about this a little bit before. It's a little confusing with the, with the uh road improvement knowledge. In the. The major streets and the local streets fund as opposed to separated out for, but I just wanted to make sure. So we we show uh transfer in from street bond revenue of nine hundred and fifty two thousand. And then the contractual of the. Capital improvement street bot, street bond at the bottom is a hundred and or one, one point oh five eight million. So I just want to make sure that we're not taking that fifty one funds from revenue and putting it towards.
Or no, last year we um transferred more money than we needed to for our projects. In both major and local.
Okay, and yeah, and then it was going to be the opposite question. Local, I wanted to make sure we weren't using street bond money for non-construction purposes. Okay. Yeah, those are my questions.
Yeah, anyone else?
Yes. Um, I know that you got the fund balance impact down to one hundred and seventy one thousand eight hundred eighty three and. That was done. I wrote things caught in our caught in our cap residents, like the park to rent on and. Some other things, but I'm really sad that that five percent increase was not adjusted at all. Um, I looked at the M M L. Salary budget survey and the average increase for population from one to five thousand. Was three percent. So I'm not sure where. Five percent is coming from when we are in this uh, when our finances are in this shape like this with, especially with no. Uh evaluations, no reviews, it's just because. And one of the positions, the person's been here for a month and. There's a three percent raise allocated towards that position. Like we, we don't have this kind of money. So I'm I'm wondering why that wasn't, wasn't touched at all.
Counsel had the chance at the time when I brought the budget. It was talked about. I don't know, I had only heard from you on the five percent. I might have, um, I think um. Member Canes, she gave me an email after the fact about it, but nobody else ever said anything about five percent. And counsel did not bring it up to me after that. So I mean, if you want to change, it's got to be agreed upon, counsel.
Well, I, like I said, I had, you know, but we, oh, we were told that, you know, the raises range or whatever. Yeah, they technically did range from now, but.
The range is only thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty three as a total dollar amount for the increase for everybody in the administrative side. And um, so I think that it is worth it because we do give customer service to the residents. We were, um, some of one of of the members, um, council members asked for us to take a a freeze on our pay raises this year. That would give bad morale to the employees to take a cut when our cost of living is eight percent right now. So I'm just saying, it was put in there. I didn't hear anything from anybody, but council member Miller and council member Canes sent me an email after.
So you're saying that we had an opportunity at our last budget hearing.
Budget.
When we could really discuss it.
But nobody really said.
Well, I mean, our, our, the administrator, I know it's just that much at this point, but our administrative expenses. Have doubled in five years. They've gone from four hundred and thirty one thousand to eight hundred and sixty four thousand. Like that's doubled, over a hundred percent increase.
I had a, I had a, I had a very interesting conversation with the mayor of Pleasant Ridge.
Excuse me, but I wasn't finished.
And he was telling me that he has uh raised, he did a increase. For his city administrator and stat, well, the city administrator. He raised it by twenty seven percent to make sure that he kept. His employees to make sure that he's not getting in a situation like we're currently in in short staff. So um. It is happening where costs are going up. I mean, everyone is trying to tighten their belt, but it's also you want, you don't want to end up with um. Having people to do multiple jobs, you know, and so. Having people to do multiple jobs, you know, and so again, right now. During our budget hearing, the budget study session, really, that was the opportunity for all of us. To really talk about collectively of what we needed to do for the budget and no one said anything during. But. No, you know.
I believe Bruce uh. Directed the staff or hammer the staff to come back with recommended cuts and.
And they did. She, he did. She cut quite a bit.
Right, but again, you know, you keep telling me I need to go to MML training and all these things. I guess we pick and choose what we want from MML, MML. Here's the. Twenty twenty two.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not at all saying anything about picking and choosing from what comes from MML. I'm just saying that when you have an opportunity to talk about a budget. And to be able to make decisions that we can all come to a conclusion or have an actual discussion and not be talked to. But talk, you know, do a collaboration. That's what we should have done two weeks ago. Instead, what's happening is, as we discussed before. After the meetings are over, that's when the emails start flying and that we're not able to have a discussion as a whole for uh. Things that are important like trying to figure out how we are going to uh, balance our budget.
Then why didn't we do that?
Because we were talking about other things that we should have been talking about the budget. We were talking about FOIAs. We were talking about the Caribbean, but we were talking about someone that's had not worked for the later village for the last five months. We were not focused on having budget meeting and our city attorney asked numerous times for us to make the time to um, have these budget meetings and we didn't. And now we're at the situation.
Uh, thing was at the top of the list.
Well, honestly, I think if you did want to cut the. The fees, you should have said one by one. Yes, no, yes, no. And we, and she would have cut the fees. And that's what we would have learned in MML. You would have learned how to finesse that and.
Oh, how to finesse. I didn't want to learn how to finesse it. I don't need to get the facts and figures.
That's a recommendation. I'm just saying, that's how you get, that's how you get all of us. To say it. You have, you have to have it. We all have to agree.
There was some discussion at the budget meeting because I know I made some statements about the five percent. It's a lot.
And even. And the three percent that you're referring to, that is after a six month review. That is not right off of July first. That will be after a six month review. Cause that is in all our, all our um. Um, our. Conditional offer of plaintiffs. For not uh, for most of our employees, say after six month um, review, you get a six month review.
And did you say that the total amount for the raises was thirteen thousand?
Yes, for the administrator.
All right.
Thirteen thousand.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Increase of hundred and twenty one thousand.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
In that section, the administration section, there's an increase of a hundred and twenty one thousand.
Can you say what page you're on?
Page one twenty four.
Yeah, most of that's from the budget.
Did you hear what he said?
Yes, it's a whole package. I get it.
Oh, no, I'm just saying that I just wanted to make sure.
Salaries, but again, the the sal, you know, doubled in five years, so.
The friend, Brenna, that has to do with insurance, sorry, that we have no control over that, how much insurance is correct and that has been increasing.
That was a huge chunk of the overall increase that you've been talking about.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you. You're very welcome. Um, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alright, well, uh, council member Kness?
No.
Council member Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Council member Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
No, it does not carry. It's an allocation of funds and it has to have a four. Member vote. Four people vote yes.
So there's no approved budget for this year, so city services will cease July first.
Okay.
Congratulations.
No city services starting. Next on the um, on the.
Mayor, there needs to be uh. I would strongly encourage council to revisit and see if they can come into a consensus. The ramifications of not having an approved budget.
It's also, it's a um. A fine, right? It's a fine from the state.
There's a fine from the state. There's also uh.
And it has to be approved by Friday. Correct, July, Thursday. Here we are. And technically you can't go forward to do the fiscal, the uh, oh yeah, can you do the budget amendment? So do we move forward? And then come back to it, or do we just let our residents know that we're going to be fine and you don't get city services until we can figure this out?
I think you owe it to the residents to figure it out this evening, but I'll leave that decision up to the council member.
We're here and. You know, I I'm I'm so sorry. It's just, I can't even believe we got to this situation because we were here. No one said anything, not a thing, when we were in our meeting and then and then right after the meeting is over. As usual, we get a barrage of emails where we can't do anything because it's in the email.
I have email due and quite sometimes.
Karen, it's not about the you're picking at at sleaze. Okay, I what I'm saying is, is that the fact is that we were here as a whole. Where we could have talked about this and I'm very sad in the fact that this is where we are at just because of the the dislike of people. We owe it to, and we owe it to our residents that we should have sat here and hammered through everything in this budget. Instead of, again, getting emails after the fact that we can't do anything about it. And so nobody's blaming you and I have not pointed a finger to you, Karen. I'm just saying in general.
Line by line, through every budget, I have been with very little discussion about it.
And so now we sit here again silent. So what do we, what is it that we have to do?
I think we have to. Look at that increase.
So save, save thirteen thousand dollars and spend twenty thousand cutting triangles? That makes a lot of sense. To have into to, so the suggestion was, was I made an email after the meeting that we freeze that the the. Staff would understand the situation that we're in and that we should. Freeze their, freeze their salary. I mean, we freeze their salary. I mean, the cost of living with inflation right now is eight point five percent. And. Freezing their salary, I mean, even giving them a five percent raise is is a, is a decline in their, in their salary.
And then it, oh, the email said that uh, freeze our wages, but twenty thousand for cutting triangles, five or four triangles and also doing the community room. Which I'm sorry, but most of our residents do not rent. We have outsiders that.
Right, and it, and it, and before the pandemic, that that room was rented almost all the time. And and now it's coming back. So again, it's it's four thousand dollars to put.
First year it's been back since the pandemic.
And it's renting. And how often do you hear that that people turn it down because because it doesn't look good in the community room?
Nobody.
Yeah.
He doesn't get the cost.
I mean, if we, if, if we don't help our staff who are already overworked, the morale is poor, we're. We're gonna lose more staff and it's just gonna be a self, self descending spiral. We're talking about thirteen thousand dollars here.
So let's just take out the thirteen thousand, put in the twenty.
I think she's being facetious.
But I'm just saying, it's just.
That was not my request.
Karen, nobody's pointing a finger at you. I'm just saying, I haven't said anyone's name. I haven't said anything. I'm just really upset in the fact that this is where we're at.
Council, what would you like me to do to take care of them?
I feel as though as soon as we say, don't give you a raise, that you are gonna walk out. That's what I'm really afraid of. I am, I'm terrified of that. When I just said, I talked to other mayors and they gave increased, significant increases just to make sure that their people stay. Because there is a pool of people that know that they can go anywhere and make more money than here. I mean, and and the fact is that not to mention the fact that not one person has applied for our position as a city clerk, not one person. And it just is.
And that one doesn't eat chicken or is fighting or we can't.
So no one's applying for our jobs. We had.
When I looked at the the MML institutions, we are in the top end of.
Well, obviously, we're not in the, we're not in the top end of being a choice for people to come and work for. So if you want to take that chance of losing. The people that we have working for us, and I'm not sure how you feel at this point of hearing this, because I would be a little afraid also. Um, let's, you know, take the thirteen thousand dollars out. I'm so sorry.
So it's five percent, it has to be five percent or zero? I'm sorry, I'm reflecting what residents have shared with me. There's a, then if a hundred percent increase in that budget, so why hasn't something been done? You two were here previously. What happened to that? Why is it so out of control?
You had an administrator in five years ago that was making sixty five thousand dollars a year. Are there any, are there any administrators that are gonna work for sixty five thousand dollars? The administrator, I I don't have my notes in front of me, but the administrator, it was the administrator increase and the. Friend benefits made up the majority of that. And then in addition, there were additional provisions added to provide city services. Uh, many of those that were split with the DDA. There was a pro enforcement, although that was actually a decrease because we only paid twenty thousand dollars and we were paying forty thousand dollars when we were contracting it out. But it was a twenty thousand increase in that category. Um, remember, there were other things in there. I'm trying to remember what they were.
Well, it really went up in twenty twenty one. So that was a lot after Matt Bumgarten was gone. So everybody, you know, keep blaming it on Matt's low salary, but.
Yeah, because there was.
Next administrator that was here for six months was suddenly high.
And then, and then there were. Yeah, there was a compensation and wage uh, uh, study that was done by the MML that showed that we were low. We gave increases to bring up, bring. Back up. That was like four years ago, Scott.
I, yeah, I think it was before the, yeah, four years before we, uh. Dr. Mitchell was hired.
Well, we've also increased numbers of staff. Now, even there's even more people working. We have a whole turn of been here um. So, you know, maybe the. Positions aren't. Meeting the needs of the residents because we have doubled this, but. When I was campaigning and we were in full staff. Are above what it had previously been. People were still saying, the phones have not been answered. No one gets back with me. There was, there were issues with resident needs not being met. So if if I had seen an increase in. Our services and all of those things that is relevant, that goes along corresponds with this increase in.
So.
Wages and benefits.
Let me ask you this question so we can move forward on this. So if we just don't give them a raise, is that gonna get us approved tonight?
Is that gonna work?
Get this budget approved tonight.
I mean, there are some other things that need to be cut.
We have leaf service. How much is leaf service?
Leaf services, um, well, it's the time that GPS puts into it, plus the machinery, if anything brings down, plus the um. The hauling to the um.
To burn it.
Yep.
Give me a rough, can you give us, can you give us a rough estimate of how much that would be removing the the salary increases?
Say probably twenty thousand.
So we'll be up to forty three thousand, oh, excuse me, my math is. It was really bad. Thirty three thousand dollars we would, we would say.
I'm not saying people don't deserve raises. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just uh, having been in business world and in other worlds. Um. People don't just get five percent for no reason. Like there are, there are goals that need to be met. There are evaluations done. And uh, you know, there were, there were raises during COVID. There was, or um, what was it? The. Bonuses that people got um.
So we understand what happened before, right? So now we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do right now. We are very clear of where we, where we were. But we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do now. So and so it also has been said very clear. That there are reviews, the reviews that the department heads do for their employees, not the city council. And I believe.
Review of the city administrators, who knows that?
So we've never had three adminis, three um, uh, administrators before until the last five months. So if they're department heads, then the city manager would do the review for them. But at this point, when it comes to their review, we would do the review for the interim city managers. So again, what can we do? Tonight? To make this budget go through?
Can I put something in perspective? So you're, you're, I think, I I thought, I think I heard you said something more like three percent. So if we give them a three percent raise. And a five percent raise is thirteen thousand dollars. A three percent raise is gonna be about nine thousand dollars for the, to the budget. So you're talking four thousand dollars here. For people who are working their butt off in a, in a grossly understaffed. Environment. That is not the most pleasant environment. I was gonna say um. It'll come to me, but you're, but you're, you're talking, you're talking four thousand dollars here.
It's just. I've been watching this for the last four to five years. There is this. Spending of money here without considering resident priorities. That is just, I I call it wreckage and. No one's paying attention, then, you know, it just continues to grow. And we were at what, eight hundred and some thousand that was supposed to come out of, or seven hundred and some thousand that was supposed to come out of the. Fund balance. Yeah, we got it down, but that we only have nine hundred eighty five thousand left. So when we have two years, three years, what happens after this? You know, after we have more increases and all the other things that have to be taken care of. We have a lot of needs in the city and I. Don't think that residents are, I brought this up earlier, residents are not part of the process here. And I mean, it takes something as small as the tea room. Oh, I decided that I was gonna pay for everyone's lunch. You know, does that happen regularly? Those are the kinds of things. In my, my home budget and my business budget, you have to live within your needs. And so are we meeting the, the needs of our residents with, we pay high taxes here? And are we meeting the needs of the residents and, you know, spending their tax dollars in the way that that we want?
Okay, so we're, we're here again, and so maybe I can say it in a different way. Cut the, the um. The uh, increase for the, the employees. Cut the leaf service. Um, what else is? What else is it?
What's the water retention tank situation? There's like five hundred.
That's not the general fund.
Thousand.
That is part of the capital improvement bond that we got because we have to have updates there and the county is watching the retention tank. I used to do it for years, so four years. That's another thing I was doing.
Right, right.
Those are, those are to be in compliant with uh. What is it the? What's the, I can point you on the term the. Yeah, the state.
NPD, state charge.
Thoughts of the new. Drain twenty, drain twenty, what what it's called, I'm like, I'm not. The term that. It's to be in, it's to be in compliance with the consent.
We just got more compliance. It's from Eagle today. It's on a meeting for two hours with them.
Yeah, I'm saying I'm not against. Increases, but when. You know, we're, we're making sacrifices all the way around here um. Again, we can't, we can't afford to, to continue to do that. And that's the budget that has had the. Largest or most increase, has increased the most um.
Again, most all of it explainable increases that that not only are we dealing with, but other cities are dealing with as well.
Well, again, we, we need to look at what the needs as a community are and um. And figure our staffing around that. I know that things were reorganized multiple times and I don't think that they were reorganized. According to resident input um. So as I said.
The charter identifies the administrator is the one responsible for organizing, not the residents.
I'm sorry, what?
I said the charter identifies it's the, up to the administrator to organize the administrative staff. That's the, that's a decision. That's the, that's a decision that's under the control of the administrator.
I, I understand that, but perhaps the city city administrator can get resident input to make their decisions. It's not something that they just have to do on their
I'm, I'm just curious what positions that you feel the city is lacking that would benefit the residents more.
Well, again, phones aren't being answered. People's questions aren't being answered. Are we still closed from twelve thirty to one thirty every day?
Can you, um, what, as the city attorney said, which position is it that isn't, say it again?
I just, I just asked what, what position that could, is deficient that, uh, the residents are suffering that needs to be created or added?
Probably a resident liaison person or something.
So that's to add another person to?
No, it's to reconfigure some of these. I don't know how many of these positions actually touch.
So
That would be up to the city administrator when city administrator configured with staff to meet the needs, which the previous city administrators have done in the past, and our new city administrator will also do when they, when they come on board. When you talk about living within, within our means, you know, in your own personal budget, we have to do the same thing. Again, that's, that's why I, I was adamant about things like, uh, the triangles and, uh, the community room. Yes, I would love to do that. I mean, but there are other ways we can do that. The triangle, we can get, you know, you can arrange a volunteer group. You know, and try to get some volunteer services.
These are priority for high price, high pay, tax paying residents. You don't get volunteers to do
There's four triangles in the community, correct?
What's that?
You, you're talking about four triangles around Morningside Plaza? How does that benefit all the residents in the city? That's one neighborhood. I, I'm just using that as an example because I haven't heard anything else that where, where are the residents lacking? The residents that are here could share with us, what, what services are they lacking from the city? That needs the creation of a city lia- a, a resident liaison.
Huge mess out there right now. I just got another email from somebody about, uh, who's California, whose yard was dug up and they're afraid now things are gonna be flooding and
Well, I, I heard earlier that the DPS was gonna be out fixing that, but they've been redirected to the house in the woods to clear that property.
Right, right, right. Cause we didn't, that wasn't redirected four months ago.
And again, that's, that's CMS. That's, that's
Project will be, they've been instructed to move that up on their schedule and it will begin as soon as San Rosa and Motar. And that is intentionally so that the residents on California are not stuck in a situation at the end of the construction season, or they are left with a bigger mess than they have now.
We'll have her call you.
She can call CMS too. There is a number for CMS and cults, which is where all of the customer complaints should be going.
I mean, is that I'm expressing what residents have shared with me? No.
Can we have public comment or something? So we can
You got one hand raised.
You want it? It's fine because I, I'm, I'm, we, we we're, I have no idea of what to do at this.
There were two council members that voted no. And so it would logically would suggest that they would, they would offer some sort of changes that would appease them so that we can move this process forward.
I'd like to get a little closer to balancing the budget. I think take pulling a hundred and seventy-one thousand out of our reserves is
Okay, so the, the
So to give us some
All right, all right, I'm looking, I'm looking. Building inspection contract. I mean, right, hundred and twenty-four thousand?
That's what they charge, I think.
That was actual? But it's, we're not even budgeted for that full amount. So where's that gonna come from? If that, that was the actual in twenty twenty-one was one twenty-four and we're budgeting seventy. Where's the forty-four gonna come from if we don't? Page one twenty-three.
Maybe we take one please, or?
That's not a benefit to the residents, having a police force.
So what?
I said that's not a benefit to the residents, having a police force with reliable transportation.
It's a replacement. It's not
Yeah, because we're spending a fortune maintaining cars that have outlived their life.
Just take the, take the car off.
Councilmember Kennes, at one twenty-four in twenty twenty-one, that's the expense we paid for our building official. We're hoping that we're only gonna be paying seventy thousand next year. But that you have to we had a lot of projects going on at that time. Plus they were also doing code enforcement before we brought on over time code enforcement officer.
So the other fifty is in a different budget or that, that difference?
No, it just, we knocked it down this year to seventy thousand instead of
Well, but that's my, that's what I'm saying. What happens if it comes in at one twenty-four and we've only budgeted for that and we're already pulling out of reserves for other things?
We have to move money around. That's how, what a budget amendment does. You take it from one place to another.
And then ARPA funds, where are those? Where do those end up?
That's the funds we're using for the elevator. We're using those for the generator for the city hall so that we have, or the police department can run when we don't hit, when we lose power here. Right now, none of the building runs at all.
But wasn't there supposed to be another two hundred thousand?
It's in the budget. It's in the revenue section.
Well, yeah, I see it, but
Those are expenses that'll be balanced out by reven- on the revenue side.
Okay. And did we include the house in the woods as a sale?
I didn't put that in there.
And did you do it at a hundred and seventy?
Coincidence?
That's what, um, was talked about at the budget hearing. When we had the budget hearings, that was what was talked about. Councilmember Kennes, or, I'm, or you can answer, Cantor said a hundred and fifty. That was just the number that he gave.
Right. They surprised had to come down, which we suspected it would.
And then the two hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollar increase in the government services. Is there anything that can be for that?
Most of the stuff that's in there is very minimal. The two hundred and sixty-four, that's, um, I mean, that's because you have the two, um, the two hundred thousand for them.
Right, but we got that, finally get four hundred thousand in as revenue.
We got the two thousand, two hundred thousand and we'll get two hundred thousand more after.
All right, well, here's another one. In public safety vehicle maintenance expense?
Because last year we had, um, a lot of used vehicles that they had to
Okay, so you're projecting?
So last, well, they usually, their budget has always been around, um, thirty-seven thousand.
Okay.
This year it's at sixty-two thousand that they're spending. Because they had an engine blow up in a car. They also had some other things happen to a car. But normally their budget is around thirty-seven thousand and that's what I funded it for next year.
And that's just for what you're talking about right now?
Oil changes, gas.
Yep. That doesn't if we're buying two new vehicles, you still anticipate thirty-seven and?
No, it could become down, but I hate to take it away right now. It could come down, but that would be a budget amendment that you would do later in the year. But you still have gas out of there and with the prices of gas right now.
And have you added any grants in here?
No, because we have not gotten any grants. I mean, you don't add grants in because it's, most of the grants are matched, fifty-fifty match. So you have to come up with the match of a grant.
And do we have some out? Have we written up some?
No.
Apply for any grants? All right, well, I apologize. This is all new to me and I didn't get a tutorial on this.
It's, it's a music background. Or, um, as I know, a hundred and seventy-one thousand is uncomfortable.
Very.
Very. But just as, as a, you know, so historically, and again, our auditors can contest to this because they said it every single year, we were one of the very few communities in the state that was able to add to their fund balance year after year after year after year. And I'll, granted through the, through the recession, we were adding a very small amount, but that's better than going the other way. But the problem is, 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 is twofold. One, you know, we had, as COVID hit, we started to have a lot of expenses. And that's when we started taking money out of, out of the fund balance. It was eventually was going to hit us. And part of what, part of the reason, we talked about this a little bit during the budget hearing, when Pam talked about the headly override, is, is we as a city are strapped via revenue. Our revenue does not change because of headly, because of Prop A, because of the unintended consequences of Prop A with, with the real estate crash. It was never designed for, you know, it was always assumed that property values would go up. Our state shared revenue is, is, is down. Um, and we can't build out. I mean, we can't make our, you know, we can't go to the building next door, one of these outdated buildings and say, we, you need to renovate that building so we can have a bigger tax base. That's something that they've gotta do on their own. So this problem is actually only, only gonna get worse. Because again, as Pam had indicated at our, at our budget session, you know, our, our village rate is going to continue to fall and we don't get more money, any more money than we got to previous year. Yes, there's a small adjustment for inflation, but over the last ten years, and pension, I know it's very small for, for inflation, but you know, there's a lot of things that we've had to do as a city. All cities have had to because technology changes. There's things that we have to purchase for technology. There's, you know, the police force, you know, there, there's technology to make them safer, um, you know, what we're best, body cams, things like that. I mean, there's more expenses, but our revenue stays flat. So it's, it's uncomfortable. But it's, you know, it's way better than, than what we had at the, the nine hundred, what was it, eight hundred, almost nine hundred thousand dollars. You know, that we had, when we had the initial draft. And I remember at that point saying, you know, it needs to get down under a quarter million um, for me to, me to, uh, support it, which Pam did a good job of doing, but, you know, we talk about not wanting to get rid of ci- city services, but as, you know, Kelly's route does it as an example. Um, you know, if we start bringing this down anymore, you know, we're gonna start getting rid of city services like fleet pickup or, you know, whatever. So it's uncomfortable, yes. I mean, I'm uncomfortable with it too, but I don't know what else we can, we can cut. And, you know, we'll have to, as a council, I mean, if, if we were to approve this budget, we're gonna have to look at other ways for, for revenue, you know? Talk about a heavily override, you know, uh, look at other ways. I mean, what, one, you know, in November, we'll have a cannabis boat. If that goes forward, that's gonna be a way for additional revenue. You know, I mean, there's, there's not a lot of ways to, there's not a lot of ways to get revenue.
Has the city looked at insurance costs? We've got very high insurance costs since they've been studied on. Three, decreasing some of those costs. You as a council, recent Kelly's on the study of the benefits.
I don't know if you've looked at changing
No, it's been MMO. For the, um, insurances and that, and our, um, our administrative staff has blue care now. Um, the police says, the, the police department handle PPO, but there's this through their contract. So there's a better, a better plan than what we have. But we have a cross issue. We did look at a cross issue and we do pay twenty percent of our medical. We, there was, um, where the city could pay for it all or the twenty and when, um, I'm not sure which manager was, but they decided to make it an eighty-twenty. So the staff pays twenty percent towards their healthcare.
So it's been a, a co-pay rather than, uh, any kind of a decrease in benefits?
Oh, they're paying a pre- they're paying twenty percent of the premium.
I, I understand. Instead of co-pay.
Well, our benefits, I mean, you can decrease some of it. There's not much there to decrease because we, we pay, you know, healthy, um, no, 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 we pay, um, you know, like for our hospital visits, we have out-of-pocket costs. We have all that stuff. We've looked into it all. And we've even with our retirees healthcare, we went with, it's called an egg whip. And the, it retires healthcare where when they turn sixty-five, they go on a whole new plan and it's Medicare and then we are only doing their prescriptions. So we saved a lot of money by doing that. And I think we have two more, um, retirees that will be going on it this year. Do we use the?
I, I mean, I guess the sad piece is there hasn't been a willingness to have real conversations or to supply information to some of us. And so that's what happens when, when you're faced with that. When you come to a situation like this and you don't have the information to be able to make these kinds of, of decisions.
Well, that's just simply not true because we were here at, at the last budget meeting when we went line by line by line to see what we could do. And you were here and all of us were here and we could have had this conversation at that time. No one said a word. No one discussed it. No, no. But with the information that could have been asked for at that meeting also, so we could have gotten to this point to, uh, approve this budget. Nothing was said at that meeting for the budget. Nothing was said. Uh, Mary Lou had her hand up for a while. She wants to say something.
Hi there. I am Mary Lou Resnick, eighteen-eight eighty, San Jose, Lathir Village. I just wanna let you know that I too have had ongoing conversations with residents. Many residents. When I'm in town, I talk to them. They email me or they'll text me or they'll communicate with me through Messenger. And they are very, very unhappy with what's going on. They're tired of hearing that it's all about the residents, but then there's no progress. So I think some of this stuff has to stop. The contempt for Bruce is palpable. And I've learned so much from what's going on from city council by going or attending meetings when I can. And I'm learning how the processes run and I am still shocked that you're spending time with teaching how to run a meeting and how to participate instead of coming up with answers. So when you say that this is for the residents and you're speaking for the residents, I don't know who you're talking to, but you're not talking to the bulk of the people that live here. And I'm frustrated because I hear the same thing over and over, but no suggestions of how to remedy the situation. And now when it comes to something very basic, we're looking at shutting down city services on July first because of two holdouts that are very clearly not aware how city council works, how the meetings are run. And very basic things, and I'm scared for our city. I have a lot of trust in the people that I voted for and I'm concerned. And I just wanna share that because I'm gonna keep trying to get people to watch these meetings. Cause I think if more people watch them, they would be appalled at some of the conversations and the lack of communication skills that are going on. The contempt is palpable. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you that are working together. And Jalen, we don't get a chance to ever see each other, but I am so glad you're part of this because you have studied this. And I wish people that, I, I wish that they would listen to the wisest of all of you. Not that Jalen is, but you know, he's fresh. He's fresh. Okay, that's all I have to say. Have a great day.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that, I'm sorry, what was I?
I was just gonna ask, ask our, what, 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 what can we do? I was just going to ask, ask our, what, 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 what can we do to get you to, I mean, what, what do you need to be able to vote yes on this, on this budget?
I needed questions answered.
Which question?
The ones you answered. I needed to know where the money's going to come from if we go over. I needed to know if we are going to refund. You said you do put money back in the.
We, you can ask all the staff here. On January first, I tell everybody, no more spending. You can ask every staff member here. No more spending on January first.
And, and given.
Sometimes they listen, sometimes they don't.
And, and again, given, you know, the, the uncomfortable, uncomfortable nature of having to go into the fund balance, we still do have about a million dollar fund balance, which is relatively healthy, given the, what's the percentage they look at? Do you remember? Given, given the overall, the overall budget, the percentage of the budget that's in, in the general fund and still a healthy amount.
Well, and I, like I said, I'm, I think this is what scares me as I look at this. And then I think, okay, four more years, we double that. And where's the money going to come from? I mean, this is, I'm looking at historical expenditures. That one's not so bad, but.
It's the administration.
Yeah. I mean, this one.
That's a different, that's not what water isn't reflected as a general, it's a separate fund.
Right. But it still is. It's very scary. All right. I'm going to go back to my five-point request. I know everyone makes a joke about that, but I was going to be charged for four thousand five hundred dollars to get the information to allow me, Ms. Mayor, to make decisions like this, to know where our money is going, to know what these credit card charges are that you save. May charges, June charges. I've asked for the breakdown of that. I haven't gotten that. I've asked for the backup for the credit card information so that I have in-depth information to be able to make decisions when we are facing a deficit like this. So to be able to make those kinds, that's how I operate. I don't care what MML training may teach me. I was on the school board for fourteen years. We had a much larger budget than this. We had to make cuts every single year. Try to stay away, as far away from the classroom as we could, but we had to make cuts. So I know how to do this. I know how to read a budget. I just need information to know what makes that, makes up that budget. And I have not received that information. So that's the issue. And as far as representing residents, I'm trying to represent residents who have not had a voice. Unlike the person who spoke, she does have a voice. And people pay attention. And there's a group of residents that are listened to, but there's a very large group of residents that are not listened to or ignored or just taken for granted. So that's who I'm talking about when I'm talking about representing residents.
So are we, so growth and, and the administrative expenses is something that we'll have to work on, but I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
It's.
Come up to the microphone, please. Yeah, because we can't hear, they can't hear you on Zoom.
My name is Pamela Perry and this is my first city council meeting. And I am just like in shock. Immediately when the, the meeting started, I can see the tension. And I didn't, I came here actually to talk to the mayor on something back in April. And I'm just so, I don't even want to bring up my topic because of all of the tension with you guys. I, I've never had a, a issue with the phones I've been answered prior to COVID through COVID. I, I came up here and I've talked to Kelda. I've talked to other people that were here. So I, I never, I haven't experienced that. As far as cutting city services, we can't do that. I mean, to cut lead pickup and any other services, you're going to have people selling their homes and moving out. They're already doing it. We can't afford to cut our services. That we just can't do that. The, the triangles, I don't know what the triangles are. I keep hearing you guys mentioning three or four triangles. What are the?
One is at Willshire, that Blackstone and.
It's a traffic triangle where streets come together and there's a landscaped area in the middle. One on Red, Red River.
Okay. So I, I really wish you guys can kind of get it together. And, and I'm not attacking anyone. It's just, if our council and our administration is falling apart, what do we have as residents? You know, it is just, I'm actually kind of embarrassed. I really wish I wouldn't have came to this meeting. I wish I could have come to a meeting where I didn't see all of this because I, my confidence level has just gone down. And I, I mean, I've been here for over thirteen years. I love the city, but we have to do better. I mean, I voted the council that's sitting up here, I voted for you guys, you know, and I'm not really having faith in what I'm standing. And, and it shouldn't be like that. My husband has been trying to sell our home literally like two years after we got here. And I'm like, no, I love Lathar Village, don't want to leave, but I don't know now. You know, I, I, I just don't know. But I came here for, I'm the, the person that, was that for me?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Yes.
Oh, it was agreement.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
There's still public comment at the end.
Yeah, you can finish them.
You can talk.
So after all this explanation, can there be a motion on the budget?
Yeah, I'll make another motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget.
Is there a second? Thank you. It's been moved to second. Is there an additional conversation?
Adopting it just as it is?
Is there any additional conversation? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Canes.
I'm very uncomfortable doing this, but I'll approve it because I don't want our services to stop. But I do want all these, I want this looked at constantly.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget amendments.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we're getting towards our end of our fiscal year, which will be Thursday, June thirtieth. And at this time, we make budget amendments to correct any accounts that are over, like with revenue, if we brought in more revenue than we had anticipated, we raised those, we cut any that we thought we would bring in more. Our expenditures, we moved money around to, for any accounts that are over to the, any that are under. Versus everything, we do it twice a year. We do it in January and June to correct the budget for the fiscal year.
I'm trying to get to the page of it.
Is there any questions on budget amendments?
Seven hundred and seventy-five, five eighty-seven.
That's the total of all funds. Seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven less in revenue than we.
No, that.
That is our budget adjustment. We budgeted, our original budget was twelve million nine and we're going twelve million one. Is what we're adjusting to. That's the adjustment made in budget.
Any additional questions? I'm sorry. Can someone make a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget amendments?
Motion to accept fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget amendments.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Now, is there any discussion regarding budget amendments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miller? Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion, Karen.
Thank you. Next, we have the Lathar Village Southfield TOS program partnership.
At our present session on Tuesday, we're going through, going through the budget and discussing smart credits. I brought up the email that I had sent to you all on May fifth regarding a proposed partnership between the city of Lathar Village and Southfield as relates to their transportation options or transportation of Southfield seniors program. And, and specifically to transfer our accumulated balance of municipal community credits, which are set to expire on June thirtieth. The transfer of these credits are, and I would say, allowing to say the accrued balance currently is thirty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And our current, our current fiscal year balance is nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-five for a total of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. The transfer of these funds to the city of Southfield would allow the city of Southfield to expand their TOS program to provide transportation services to Lathar Village seniors. They are, the city of Southfield does provide this service in extremely limited capacity right now. And this would formalize, formalize this program. And again, allow, provide greater transportation services to our residents. These municipal and community credits can only be used for transportation services to our residents. So if you don't use them or transfer these funds by the end of this fiscal year, we will lose them. It was, there were concerns and comments brought up about, you know, internally track ridership of Lathar Village residents and collect data to ensure that we truly are serving our residents. And this will be a pilot year for this program. So we will be able to, to take this year to, to, to do just that and accumulate the data to make sure that this truly is a service that is of a benefit to the city. The city of Southfield will be assuming affirmative action by council tonight. The city of Southfield will be taking formal action at their July eleventh meeting to expand this program and SMART will be assisting both communities in marketing and advertising of this program to our residents. So I am requesting the city council authorize the transfer of these, of these credits, again, in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars to the city of Southfield for the purpose of their TOS, expanding their TOS program.
Thank you. And just to say what TOS is, is the transportation of Southfield seniors program. So would like to take, make a motion for that.
Make a motion to approve the Southfield TOS program partnership between Lathar Village and the city of Southfield.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I want to know what are the goals that you're trying to accomplish? What evaluation criteria will be, will you be using to see how this meets and what kind of marketing and advertising is the city going to do to make sure that all of our residents know that this program is available and something besides e-newsletters or whatever, like what, what's, what's the plan? This is a lot of money that we're turning over. What, what's the plan?
Out in terms of marketing and promotions, yes, it will be included in e-newsletter. It will also be included in our upcoming frank newsletter. Updates will be made available to the website. I'd like to be able to put, place it on our public access bulletin board. As I mentioned, SMART will be also, also be assisting us in marketing efforts. And I will need to explore with them. Perhaps we can partner on a direct mailer for our residents. Southfield, as Southfield will be managing the program overall. I mean, we have expressed to them that we would like them to track the ridership numbers in a more detailed way and share that information with us. I, the goal is to improve transportation services for our seniors. So in my opinion, the and any, any increase in transportation, providing those services is a success.
Well, you have to look at realistic return on investment. And, you know, we're giving forty-eight, forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and maybe ten people use it. That's not really a great use of our money. And we have, you have to know your audience. If we were talking about seniors who don't have transportation, they're probably not getting text messages or.
Which is why I mentioned the non.
Yes, I know you didn't mention it, but that should be.
I'm aware of that.
You know, to make sure that we're communicating with, with the target market that we're, that we're working.
And that's also why we talked about at the last meeting that, you know, we can evaluate this at the end of the year. And if there are only ten people, then we don't continue to send our annuals, you know, our smart credits that way. We do something else with them.
Well, right, but it's forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars right off the bat. We're looking at, that would take about a third of our one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
You can't use that.
For anything other than providing transportation services.
And their credits.
It, yes, though, and. But we could. The thirty-five thousand dollars is use it or lose it. And it can only be used on providing transportation services. The current fiscal year balance is nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. That is generally what our annual amount is. And again, that can only be used to provide transportation services. It could not be used or incorporated into the city's budget.
It was, so then why was it, why was the money just sitting there? Why wasn't it used to, to benefit our residents?
We, I, I was working on this program with Dr. Cheryl Mitchell. We have been, we have been accumulating funds. I can't tell you why specifically these funds weren't used before, but in an effort to provide additional services to our residents, this was an avenue that I choose to pursue.
So could we hire a, a driver to drive the van that sits there without being used? Do we use money to hire a driver to take seniors around?
Yeah. We would have to, I, I mean, we would have to have that plan in place today in order to utilize these accumulated credits.
Well, maybe we should involve residents in decisions like this because people can come up with real creative ideas of, of things to do. So hopefully this doesn't happen again.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. Had we used that money in the past and what did we use it for? This is all brand new.
I know we used some of these funds to purchase the van. Beyond that, I am not aware that was, those are funded.
We used to use those funds when we went on like baseball trips, things when Parks and Rec would do more programming to go to ball games, Lions, Tigers, things like that. We would get big Greyhound buses and then we could use those funds for the Greyhound buses. We get reimbursed for those. And that was the transportation that we did. But the last couple of years, our Parks and Rec, well, even probably last three or four years, they really have not programmed to go to, you know, any of the games or take the big buses anywhere. So that's why the money is still.
And how many years have we been collecting that?
We got a little leeway through COVID, so we've been accumulating these for about three years.
Oh, I meant prior to that, not that. Like, is it's been a program we've been doing forever? Like ten years?
It's been a long time.
It's been a long time.
So we're going to try it with Southfield one year? Was it a contract or how do, what are we?
There will be an intergovernmental agreement between.
Intergovernmental, okay.
And this is something that we harvested previously, John won with Milford Township, Highland Township, White Lake. Where they utilize their CDBG funds collectively to provide transportation services to disabled residents in those communities. So it's a pretty similar format.
Will that be it for disabled residents as well or just seniors?
I'm not sure. I haven't had any conversations with Southfield, but I mean, if that's something that we would like to include disabled residents or.
I'm sure that is.
People that are otherwise unable. The program that we did in Milford was for people that weren't able to obtain a driver's license, whether through disability or, or other. Reasons and they were, they were provided with transportation to and from employment, things of that nature through this program, so.
Oh, so it's the same program?
Well, it was a, well, similar funding source, different program. It didn't last, unfortunately. So it lasted a few years. It worked well while it did, but then everybody had different things they wanted to spend their money on, so.
What does TOS provide? What services do they provide?
TOS provide, I, they will allot, they will pick up residents and drop them off at their doctor's appointments, grocery stores, that were kind of thing we need.
We don't know if they take disabled people or we don't know what the scope of the program is. I can't recall off the top of my head all the emails and information I've received from the city of Southfield departments program.
One last question. Are they using our bus or they're going to have their own bus?
They have their own buses, but that has been something that has been discussed, but not. Not, not really agreed upon or finalized or anyway, but it was just, hey, yes, we have a bus. That is available. And we did, we did. Have conversations about possibly having a dedicated bus driver utilizing that bus, but that's not. Again, that's not something that's been decided upon. I do believe that this is, that's something that can be. More specifically hammered out as we go through this agreement, the intergovern, intercomamental agreement with the city of Southfield. To make sure that we have all of those questions in detail, details and information outlined.
And so in the packet, it does say both seniors and disabled residents would greatly, will benefit greatly if this kind of service was made available. As it would be in addition to services Smart offers. So it is in the packet that says, pardon me?
What packet?
The packet that, that you, that you're reading from?
Yes.
It's on their website as well. It says TOS provides transportation.
It's on page one sixty three.
Sixty and up permanently physically challenged residents of any age who reside in Southfield or Laver Village.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Motion here.
Thank you. Next is the adoption for electric vehicle charging ordinance.
Yes, mayor and council. The city's planning commission has been. Discussing the electric vehicle charging station and considering an adoption of, or yeah, the adoption of. Electric vehicle charging ordinance. This is not something currently provided for. And the city zoning ordinance or general code and. They were interested in finding ways to support and encourage sustainability throughout the community. So back at their May meeting, they held a public, a public hearing. On to adopt the electric vehicle charging station ordinance that was included in your packet. This is a mechanism, this will allow mechanism for interested property owners to install those vehicle charging stations in the commercial district. So this is not, this does not require. The property owners install these, but it, it again, allows them the option to install them should they be interested. So I mean, it provides them with the, the guidance and standards that they would need to do so.
We have a motion for adopting the electric vehicle charging ordinance.
Motion to adopt the electrical vehicle.
Is there a second?
Vehicle charging ordinance. I couldn't see that.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
So I was curious about the enforcement through, through code. Would, would they be able to? Permit like tickets because I'm looking at the maintenance, right? If they're not. They're not functioning and say they just never come back to, to fix the EV charging station, right? How can we, what, what can we, you know, do to?
Yes, I mean, we could issue down a citation under the zoning ordinance as we would with any other violation of the zoning ordinance. Um, as you see in, in that ordinance, that those spaces, any spaces not in working order.
Goes against your.
Go against your required parking was another violation.
If they don't, if they fail to meet the minimum required number of parking, then that, that counts against their certificate, certificate of occupancy and/or their special land use approval. If they're operating under a special land use approval. So that's something that potentially the city could show cause that property owner, again. Not that this is a deterrent for people putting in EV charging stations. It provides standards and. Location thresholds for, for these in, in developments that may wish to put them in at some point. Potentially in the future as technology evolves and. Whether or not electric cars are here to stay or something else comes along, that this obviously may become a, a requirement of a new development. But this is, as Susie indicated, very proactive, forward-thinking ordinance that lets developers know that. You know, Lather Village is looking not only at the present, but looking to the future and implementing standards so that these, these. Property owners have an idea and understanding of what, what the expectations are. They can. Put something in that's going to be, not only be safe but functional for, for their customers and for potentially their residents.
Sure. And that is one thing that we did talk about as planning commission is whether or not to acquire it for future developments, at least the infrastructure to support it, but we did not include that in.
Probably a little early for that, yeah.
Exactly. That's why we didn't include it, but we did talk about it. And I, I believe even the memo in here suggested, from the planner suggested it, but we didn't, we didn't put it in.
So how will we be able to, so who would encourage new development to, you know, put EV in there if we're not making it a requirement? Like, would that be?
It's a market right now.
Market right now, but I mean, I, I meet with. Every.
Yeah.
Potential commercial developer or someone, you know, looking to redo their site. So I mean, this would certainly be something that, that I would bring up to them. It would not surprise me. If it was something that the planning commission brings up to them and of course the site plan review. They're very, they are very proactive, thoughtful group of gentlemen at this point. So I, I think that it would not surprise me if they were brought up in that, in that scenario as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions or concerns or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you. Next, we have the appointment of Saquah representative and alternate.
I guess so. Annually, as a member of Saquah. How the council is required to appoint a representative and an alternate to attend and participate in the Saquah meetings. Yeah, I know we, we did do this in December and that was to fulfill those appointments being vacated by Dr. Mitchell. So this is the annual appointment for the upcoming fiscal year.
So I made a recommendation and I obviously did a mistake because I didn't not mean for Mayor Protim, you know, both of them. At all. So my recommendation would be to have Barb Canes as the representative and Susie Steck as the alternate to Saquah.
To Saquah?
Saquah.
Why am I being considered?
I think Karen was for the last six months. And there's been no conversation with me about this to the folks who want us to work together. We had no conversation.
So yeah, I'm confused on that one too. So why are we not, I mean. We were just doing, and I want to make sure I understand. We were just doing it before. It seemed like we just appointed. So we've just appointed.
Council, we have to feel, to fill the vacancy. Originally, Dr. Mitchell was the representative for Saquah and Saquah. And I was the alternate to both of those boards. With her departure, we needed to appoint new voting members to fulfill those per vacancies. So.
And we're doing it now again because.
For the, and that was, that was to finish out this current.
Gotcha. Thank you. So and then, and then Karen was Saquah.
Correct.
So I'll redo it again and, and say, recommend Karen Miller as representative, Susie Steck as, as alternative.
I was just saying, though, at the time, though, didn't we talk about doing that as an interim until we had a new city administrator?
It's still going to be, it's still going to be.
No, we didn't. That was the night we made all the appointments to all of the different.
It was still, that I recall that we were still doing it as, until the city manager was in place because normally it would be a city manager and a staff person.
Typically, that's how, that's how most of the appointments are for both Saquah and Saquah. There are a couple of communities that have their elected officials serving on those boards, but for the most part, it is.
I mean, this is only my, it's just a recommendation to keep Karen Miller as the representative and Susie Steck as alternate. The council can decide on how you want to do that. If you want it to be interim until the city manager's in place. Or you just want to keep it the way that it is. Totally up to the council. I just made the recommendation.
I think if, I think if you would like to have incoming city administrator do it, you would have to redo your appointment.
Right, understand.
I'm fine with it.
Karen. So it's just for interim? And that's what the dis, discussion?
Well, we can revisit it anytime if we think it makes sense for the city administrator, but.
Okay, and who wants to make the motion?
No, I'm almost. Motion to. Adopt the attached resolution to and appoint Karen Miller as the representative and Susie Steck as the alternate to Saquah. And authorize city staff to notify Saquah.
It's been moved in second. Is there any additional conversations? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yeah.
Motion here.
Thank you. Next one is to Saquah. And this will be replacing it for Rami as the. Alternate.
Correct. And I am.
Alright.
Um, go ahead. Or do we need to make a motion?
Well, we have to make a motion, but. I think that we need to talk it through.
Okay.
Yeah, because my, the, the recommendation was for Bruce and it's just rethinking just to have some, just so everybody is doing something. On, you know, different committees. I, I will take back Bruce from being the alternate and, and recommend Susie as the representative and Barb Canes as the alternate.
Let's support.
Make the motion.
Make motion.
Make motion to have Susie as the representative and Barb Canes as the alternate.
It's been moved in second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you. Next, we are going to, which was added to the agenda for item G. We have the city administrator. Did I just broke down city administration? Got it, okay.
So based on the discussions during tonight's study session, the recommended motion would be to present the. Administrator contract as discussed and revised during this evening's study session to Sue Montenegro for consideration and approval.
We have a motion.
Do we need to list out the individual items or is it as, as?
You can identify the, if you'd like to highlight pay and benefits or.
I was just asking. I'm fine. I'm fine. I just wanted to make sure we're doing it right.
I mean, it's been discussed. It was all part of the.
So, but we just, we discussed that in, in study sessions. So what we were talking about now was the severance. Which was three months, four months and, and going up from there. The other thing was the, the vesting, which vesting is we're putting it in there. But we still need to know what the, what the cost is. So we agreed to a seventy five, twenty five, split twenty five hundred dollar one time. I mean, one time is the max that we'll go to for twenty, yeah.
Yeah, not to exceed a thousand dollar annually, the fee, should the amount exceed a thousand dollar annually or twenty five hundred dollar one time initiation fee, there's going to be a twenty five, seventy five percent cost sharing.
Right. And then the last one was the healthcare is negotiable and I'll say if your husband lose your, loses his healthcare opposed to, but this one to say.
Jalen shares any additional information with us.
I have no, I have no, no information.
Now you know what the nodes we want.
Yeah, right.
So who was making, did we do the motion? We did the, and we seconded it?
We didn't second.
No.
Oh, second.
No, I'm sorry.
You didn't, you didn't make the motion.
I didn't, I didn't make more than.
I didn't think anybody.
I mean, it's a suggestion.
No, we, we need a motion.
Motion to approve. Sue Montenegro's. Contract for city administrator with the, the changes that we made at study session.
It's been seconded twice. So is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you. Next is the Michigan Home Owner Assistance Fund from Michigan State Housing Development Authority.
Yes, mayor and council. The, today I was given a form for the Michigan Homeowners Associate, Assistant Fund. For the Michigan State Housing Development Authority and it's in agreement with the city of Lather Village and the Michigan Homeowners. The Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And what this is, is this is been a fund that was federally created. Program to help low-income residents that have had problems during the Corona, coronavirus pandemic. To provide funding for eligible entities that, like delinquencies, defaults, foreclosures, loss of utilities or home emergency services. And we are looking to have this approved for the city of Lather Village for their utility bills. And then they would have, we would get a number. They would call us. We'd give them the number and then they would have to fill out all the paperwork with the state initiative until it's high board.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion to that?
Motion to approve Michigan or adopt the Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund through Michigan State Housing Development Authority. Provider participation agreement.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you. The next that was, I, I'm going to flip it because I don't have anything to introduce unless you just want to do. I'm going to do the nineteen, nineteen four hundred, is that the right address? I'm gonna do the nineteen, nineteen-four hundred, is that the right address? House in the Woods.
Nineteen-sixty-six.
I was two hundred off.
I agree.
Your turn. So it's been recommended, currently that the listing price is a hundred and ninety-five thousand is recommended that we lower it to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I guess I just said what we needed to say, to make a motion, make a motion on it.
And also to, I believe extend the contract.
So we would need the contract first, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's what we, we said earlier. We would agree to reducing the price and that he would provide an updated agreement. And we would take that up at the next.
That's what I thought. Yeah. Yeah. So we'll do that. Let's go ahead.
Well, I guess the only question I have there is, is can we move to extend the contract, the existing contract for another month?
Yes.
So that.
As long as, John's okay with that.
Because that way he doesn't have to be, you know, uncontracted for the interim.
Yeah. Probably, his contract probably is open-ended, right? Month, month after.
Well, it's, it's not really open-ended. I mean, it has to be extended or not extended. Let's put it that way. We could extend it for however long you want to extend it for. A month, three months, up to a year or whatever you want to do. I'll, I'll make a motion to um, uh, lower the House in the Woods asking price from a hundred and ninety thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand along with extending the contracts with John Rude until the July twenty-fifth. Council meeting, at which point that can be revisited more formally. And then also to request that uh, uh, DPW do some, some uh, grass cutting and, and improvements that were discussed at the, as much as they can possibly do. That was discussed at the study session.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any additional discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canez.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion care.
Thank you. Now you have, you're welcome. Um, yeah. I mean, Southville Public Schools.
Yeah. So I just added that just, you know, one, you know, we had the public comment at the prior uh, study session, but then I know also the, the mayor and I have heard various things about uh, um, what's going on in Southville Public Schools and we have not heard anything. So I, I guess I'll let you take it from there.
So it's been brought to my attention that there was a um, a, a vacancy on the Southville School Board. And um, for whatever reason. And it was open for appointments. And unfortunately, we didn't, I didn't know about it. We didn't know about it until after the fact because that would have been an opportunity to have a Laker Village resident to be appointed to that. Um, in addition, we, or I was told that there was a uh, there was a grumblings one about there's a millage that's going to be coming. And the fact is that they are considering closing another school. And I think that's a survey. And that was from a survey. So it was a millage is coming, a school closures, the board vacancy. Um, and so I just, I am curious if, if, you know, councilwoman Miller, if you can shed some more light on the, what's going on with that?
No, I was in a set on the focus group, which is, they've brought together various members, staff, students, members of the community. I was there with the school board and they asked us questions about rightsizing the school district. And how did people feel about closing schools, about community schools, about all the programs that they might be able to offer? Um, and that was it. There was no information given out about specific schools being closed. They have made no decisions. I recommended that they, uh, if they are going to close any school, that they be upfront with people from the very beginning. Um, but they, there has been nothing else that has come after the focus group.
And you didn't know anything about the board member quitting?
No, I saw something on Facebook. No one contacted me about anything. No.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think somebody contacted you. I was just saying, because you were saying that you're the liaison. It would just been a good idea that our, as a residents would have been a good idea for them to be able to apply for that too, because we don't have any representation.
Yes, we do. Ashanti Bland is the school board president and she lives in Laker Village. So.
Alright, relax.
That's been something we almost always have representatives on the school board.
Okay. Well, it still could have been, I mean, it was just the fact that I was just wondering.
It was a very short turnaround period and.
So you didn't know about it?
I, I said I saw something on Facebook that was due.
Okay.
I think Amani, Amani posted something on Facebook that there was an opening. I tried to find who was leaving and that information was not out there. There was a, a short few day period to apply.
And, and you know what, you know what's going on with the student liaison?
Coming to our meetings, you mean?
Yeah.
No, I, I actually would not recommend that for the poor students, but no, I don't. And as I said earlier, the contact at McIntyre was retired. So I don't believe that they have actually hired another principal yet.
You know, we haven't had another meeting before the end of the year or you have it planned for when they get back into school?
Yeah, we can't do anything at this point.
Well, I, I get that. I was just wondering if you have something that's already planned for us?
No, because I'm not sure what's going to happen. If they're going to, if they're going to go ahead with a millage request, I'm not sure. So I'm.
And is there going to be, because I just want to know if there's going to be an opportunity for the residents to open up a town hall or something for the residents to have a discussion about the millage that, that.
Oh, I'm sure there will be. We'll make sure that. Well, again, it's interesting. I'm not sure what the, what's the expectations are for this position because I didn't really see much from the previous person, at least not publicly, you know, to residents. I wasn't aware of what the expectations were. So if there's something written down about what's expected from this.
It is not where anything is written down. I guess it was all things about public schools that you would kind of, or the person in that position would bring it back. And I, I just assumed that being in that position um, that you would let us know, especially the residents, know that there was a vacancy um, and that there's a millage that's coming and that there is a possible, a possibility of a school closure that could possibly affect our residents.
Well, I've spent most of my time trying to get information on what's happening in the city as opposed to the school district.
That would be affecting the city. That, that definitely would affect the city with the millage to our, to our folks.
You're missing my point, but.
Because I didn't catch it at all.
My focus has not been the Southfield School District.
Okay. City administrators. Thank you. City attorney.
Nothing for me this evening.
Thank you. Boards, commissions, committees, planning, Southville, recreational advisory committee.
I did go to SimCard this past week. I wasn't able to stay the entire time. I had a previous engagement. But I was able to sit in on the elections uh, for our regional review committee and transportation coordinating council. Uh, so the regional review committee, uh, they basically disseminate the TAP, the TAP funds. So uh, I did vote and I did make connections with the new TAP members. So hopefully if we ever need to use those TAP funds, we can have good contacts and reach out to them and see if we could be possibly considered for TAP funding. Uh, and that's all I have for SimCard today.
Thank you. Um, is there any unfinished or new business that we need to discuss? Nope. Okay. Public comment. Yeah, three minutes.
I'm Nancy for a minute. I, I sort of a comment question. Out walking the park, it's rack, the Surrackwood Park. It's a playground park. I am just wondering, they have, I believe it's three garbage cans and no one's collecting the garbage. Um, Jim Bizinski and Nancy have been doing it about once a week because there's lots of dog poo poo and other things. And it's just dirty and stinky. And my thought is if no one's collecting it, maybe you just remove the garbage cans. It just seems kind of silly to have them and then to not have anyone. I don't know. Is it not our garbage? Or.
Turn Valley.
Are they, is that their job?
Whose job is that?
I would say.
S E P S that they go by there and pick it up?
Okay. That's kind of a problem. Okay.
Usually if we have summer interns.
They would get dog, they would.
Hey, Lisa's picking up the dog poop. That's a good thing.
I know, but you know, Jim and Nancy are wonderful and they're good servants of the community, but I just felt kind of bad that they've been doing it. Um, and I, I wanted to make you come in. I know you're going to clear around the House in the Woods. I had my dog, my granddad this past weekend walking and the overgrowth onto the street is so bad. I know it's not a big, heavy traffic area. It's not like cars are, but I felt really unsafe as I was rounding the corner because it's pushing me so out, so far out in the street. So just like letting you know too, that as someone who walks around it. And is it Sue or Susan?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to call you Susan. That's how I was first introduced. I met you with me and great. And I know we've had lots of tension tonight, but I'm really glad you're on board. I'm, I think you're ready for the challenge. And I think some, I think you're ready to kind of bring this group together and then all of us. So, welcome.
For DPS, if you, if they can just get on a schedule like every Monday along with Trigalli, so it's just, you know, because what they could do is just bag it up and put it on the side. And for now, they can pick it up. If you do that for all parks, actually.
Hopefully not while walking the road.
For all parks and we just put it on the side so they can pick it up. That'd be great. Anyone else? I do see, is there someone else in the audience? Did you experiment? Did you want? Okay. And then Mayor.
The original, the original reason why I came is because April of, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, I sent an email out to Barbara Bruce. Here, June, remember? About, it was actually a thank you email about the cleanup off of Santa Barbara and Six-Ninety-Six Service Drive. But from other residents, there's been so much backlash about the cleanup with all of the wooded area. So I had my neighbors who, every day after work, they came, they chopped woods. This area has been overgrown for, because I've been here, but it just got progressively worse. So I put it in an email. No one ever replied to me. I, I didn't get a response, anything. And I, I felt ignored by them. Um, so I wanted to come face to face to talk to you guys about this. Rami, I, I flagged him down every time I saw him. If I was at home and you roll past, I flagged him down. Finally got it cut down, but it still looked bad, but it's better. So I, I'm not on Facebook, but I heard villagers were complaining on Facebook about it looking really bad. But my driveway is right across the street from that woods, that wooded area. I have, I made a police report in twenty nineteen because they were fixing the streets and someone used the bath. They, they had tissue in the wooded area and they would go and use the bathroom. I took a picture. I made a police report. Nothing still was done. Um, people parked their cars over there. I've seen females get out of a car, get into another car, and it just stays there half of the night. And so I have a grandson, seven years old, and it's kind of scary. It, it became a safety issue. And I, I thank you guys for cleaning it up, but now my question is what's going to be done to kind of beautify it? You know, like to make it look better?
Plant some trees that, whatever that.
Well, that was the problem. That was the problem originally. The, the weeds, it, it was just never grown. You know, and, and like the young lady said, the house in the wood.
Your best friend.
The house in the woods, it like, the weeds are growing back and they're growing into the street. I mean, if you guys ride over there, you, you see how it looks. But I'm glad it's better. You know, I just, uh, the tree guy for DTE was out and I took a picture of him. He went on the side of his truck and peed right there for all they like. I mean, this happens all the time. I know that's my time, but this is what I actually came here for. So I, I guess I, I felt ignored. I felt like, wow, it doesn't matter that I sent this email out and I didn't get a response. But being here tonight, I cannot understand why. Um, well, I'm not pointing fingers.
No, I'm saying the policy.
Email too.
But I know, but the policy is we're not supposed, you heard tonight, we're not supposed to respond. So I. And I, I apologize. And I'm so sorry that I did not respond. I see your email and you know what? It was a statement and I took it as a statement more than a question, you know? And I apologize personally. And I, yes, I, it's my fault. I'm sorry. I'm really, really sorry.
Blaming anymore. I'm not here to blame.
I know you're not. I know you're.
Together. I'm not here to blame either.
It's not, I mean, one thing I will make sure of is that we'll get, um, when Scott comes back, I'll talk to him about it. Because I do, I know exactly what you're talking about because I pass it, you know, every single day.
And it's just, you know, I see strange things there. You know, I, I, I've seen strange things. So I'm not trying to figure, I'm not trying to blame anybody.
Okay.
I.
The city. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Bringing it to our attention though. And I do, I mean, sincerely, I am very sorry that I did not respond.
I accept that.
Thank you. I, I do. I apologize.
I accept that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Put Mary Lou on?
Hi, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm grateful for the opportunity to volunteer my services to take the bus and use it for transport if we need to be a, you know, be doing that to stay part of a program. Um, I used to drive when the movie sets or the movies were being filmed in Detroit area. So I had, you know, license to do that. I had the um, good fortune to be able to use it to take a couple of people out for dinner when the seniors or not seniors, but when the group of people were going out to dinner. So I talked briefly with Suzie about it. And if that's um, a situation where I could still do my job and volunteer to do that too, I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Mayor and council comments. Again, we are looking for the Southville Laker, uh, the, the Southville Laker Optimist Club is looking for a representative from council or from one of our boards. Just, um, you know, let me know or show them. And that's all that I have for today.
I have to go to an event for them tomorrow. So I'll see, I'll fill out the room and see if I want to be.
Uh, I just want to comment about Santa Barbara and Eleven Mile. The city did used to maintain them, at least so that really around the corner. So there was a large area that was maintained by the city. And then I don't know what happened to that. And you can see now that whole section is growing back. So that used to be the city's responsibility. I don't know if it's the residents.
It must have been a responsibility of course.
Well.
Because I, I registered over thirteen years and before I knew the name and I was riding around looking that area was just overwhelmed. It, it, it was bad. Right. So I, I don't know when they were maintaining it.
Well, at one point it got, you couldn't even see around and stop some. I mean, I know what you're talking about. It was awful. And so, but it had not been like that for all the other years that, you know, I had lived here. So probably for the sixteen before that, it was maintained by the city and it was far enough back. So it wasn't that overgrown mess that we had that is again now coming back. So.
Well, well, it was cut down.
Oh, no, I know. But I'm saying, I see there's a large section.
At home, they really beautified that one.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, yes.
And, yes. Well, you guys then have an email. You can look in the, in the email because when there was a car parked up there and my name is Smith and I called the police, the police told me that that was a city property.
When there was a car parked up there and my name is Spence and I called the police, the police told me that that was a city property. And it was okay for that car to be there, but the city told my neighbors, they were responsible for putting that area up, so. Whose property is it, you know?
It appears to be city-owned right of way, but that would mean that it's the responsibility of the adjacent property owner to maintain that, so that. That triangle is is all of that that parcel right there.
So perch section. And 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 uh relatives, they did, they cut bushes and he stopped on. Almost to the end of the fence, now I think that part belongs to the city, so.
Again, it it appears as if, just based off Oakland County's records uh that I was able to pull up here. It would, and I'd have to go back and verify this, but it it does appear that at some point that roadway was vacated. Or at least the end of that roadway was vacated right here um. Rainbow Drive, that doesn't come through.
It's Santa Barbara.
No, Santa Barbara and.
Santa Barbara and eleven.
Yeah, but at Santa Barbara and eleven mile, this rainbow drive dead ends.
Oh, yeah, right here.
And so the condos have one half of that roadway, the undeveloped portion, so I would suspect that the other half is this property owners. And that would mean this entire corner is their responsibility.
All the way to eleven mile? Right.
Because the city comes out every Friday, well, I I'm saying this to you, every Friday. Um the lawn service comes out and they actually cut that area. But there's so many weeds and uh trees left, they can't do more than the area.
I think they might do it, but I think, I mean technically, like I said, technically that looks like it, and then we'd have to look into it, but technically it looks like it might be that. She's right there.
Um our city attorney is gonna um look into it and get and find out who it's actually responsible for.
Had said that it was responsible for code enforcement, he had said at the time we were discussing that, that they will be putting grass seed down there, so.
He said after they ground out the stumps, they would throw down some seed, but. I don't know who's grinding out the stumps.
Well, there was a company that came over.
We did.
Hope we didn't pay him.
Say Dave Streaser did something for. Ten, yeah, ten thousand some dollars. Twenty, oh twenty, that's a good call.
But we'll um hopefully have that by the end, we need to, um any other comments, council comments? Hearing none, I will um entertain or I will accept a motion to. I need to be second outside, thank you.